All right, I would like to welcome everybody out to our Harriman City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 25th, 2021. We appreciate all the members of the audience that have come and joined us today. We have Scout Troop 123 that will be providing our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance today. We will start with the invocation by Caleb Wardle, and then after that Scout Troop 123 will provide us with our flag ceremony. So Caleb, if you'd come to the podium for our invocation.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Please let this will be a civil discussion. Please let the rain will keep on coming. And thank you for letting us have this rain to help with the fires and in the smoke. Please let there be peace in the world. Amen.
Color Guard, attention. May the audience please rise. Proper salute. Color Guard forward march. Color Guard halt. Please present the colors of the United States of America. May you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guard retreat. The audience may be seated.
All right, we'd like to thank those who participated in our meeting, particularly for the tone that it helps set in civil discourse and participation in our community. So for those young men who participated, thank you very much. We genuinely do appreciate your participation.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say it's been quite some time since we've had a scout troop here to do the flag ceremony for us, and that was awesome way to begin tonight. I've really missed that.
I have well. Okay, I have 4.2 city council comments and recognitions.
I'll just say quickly that once again, kudos to our event staff for supporting the Moto X a couple of weekends ago. If you haven't ever had a chance to go out there, one of the finest events that we have in the city, a great time. It was a perfect night. Again, just outstanding job from the support for our staff once again.
I just wanted to say a big thank you to those. I love the city we live in, and I'm really proud of our city. Last week, when the big rainstorms came through, we had city staff, police, fire. You know, we kind of almost expect that of them. That's their jobs. Showing up, filling up sandbags to help with some of the flooding that was going around the city. But it wasn't very few minutes later where residents were coming up from all over, showing up with shovels and gloves and pitching in and getting those bags filled quickly, to the point we ran out of bags and people were still coming to help. That's what Harriman is all about, and it makes me very proud of our community, and I'm very thankful for all of those people who volunteered. There's been so many cool things that have happened in our community in the last last week. Special parades for residents who are finding cancer. We've seen amazing events out here with the farmer's market and and the I love Harriman. I'm glad we're all here. So thank you, everybody, for their participation and helping to make this a great community. Also wanted to publicly say this, Councilmember Warren and I were having a conversation before the meeting started of the importance and the value of having an invocation before our meetings. With the I just can't think of a better way to start this meeting than asking for divine blessings to be upon all of us as we go through our deliberations and conduct the business of the city. And as members of city council and as a body, we can't invite specific people to come and say that. But I want people to know that we, members of the community, we would like you to come and volunteer to offer an invocation before this meeting as we meet every time. So I'm going to put that call out, and I'm going to look for some members of our community to take up that call and help us carry on that in our future meetings.
It's my understanding that Councilman Henderson is with us electronically as well. Jared, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Jared, are you there?
Hello, hello.
Well, stuff works to get Councilman Henderson up and running. Just know that he is attending us digitally, and he is here to participate. So he can hear what's going on, and we are working to resolve that issue as we move forward. With that, we will move on to section five, which is the public comment portion of our meeting. Now, there are several different items which many residents are here to speak regarding. And we're going to go through these in a little bit of an order. For those, I do have a comment here in regards to item at the Olympia Hills Discussion, which is the public hearing, item 8.1. We will hold items. So any comments in regards to that will hold for the public hearing, which should be held later in this meeting. So if you'd like to speak to that, and it seems that I've skipped you, please know that that'll be coming here a little bit later in the meeting. We have two other items. There is one for item 10.3 in regards to the city's participation and in the Trail of Hope and waiver fees. I have a long list here. There is not an opportunity for public comment during that time. So we will be bringing those up here in just a minute as well. So this will be your opportunity if you would like to speak to that as well. We also do have one, a third one, which we'll start with, but I do want to just read some verbiage here in regards to our public comments. Audience members may bring any item to the city council's attention. Comments will be limited to two minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that do not appear on the agenda. Public comments for this meeting will also be conducted electronically. Any person interested in addressing the council may submit a comment by emailing recorder@harriman.org or by visiting harriman.org/agendaandminutes, where there will be link to fill an online public comment form. Your statement will then be read into the public record. So just for organizations so that we can kind of keep track, we will start with items that are not related to things or that are not directly addressed in our agenda, and then we will move on to other items as well. And we will start with Antonio, I'm going to say this wrong, Val Zueno. And if you are here and you'd like to make a comment, please come up to the podium and address this body.
We're even in mayor, counselors, other authorities. Sorry for my English. I'm Venezuelan immigrant. I live in Copperwood apartment, and we, in this time, we are living difficult moment with the water. And you can see all the mornings that the faulty system of irrigation that Copperwoods and Emerson communities have, and you can see all the days running the water into the internal walls, roads, and nobody do nothing. And I think that is, I would like to urge this council to talk with the authority to the administration of both complex to solve this problem. It's a problem that is for all of us, not, it's not a government problem. On the second hand, I represent a Venezuelan-American organization of UTA. And I would like to submit and your consideration that we will like to make educational videos with with our authorities, with the policemen, with the firefighters, with the counselors, in order to make a closer relation with the community, the Latin community that usually are afraid of these authorities, especially with the policemen. And we would like to submit this consideration. If we receive authorization, and maybe we are successful with it, we can do with the American people too. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. And I think that this body would be very supportive of that. We would direct you to work with staff on that, and they'll reach out to you in just a little bit and to further assist you with that. In regards to the water, I know that is something this body has been working with, and we continue to strive to hit that as best we can to make sure that we are addressing those water needs as well. So that was the first comment forum. Were there any other comments in regards that were not in relation to the items we have on the agenda? If you would like to make a comment other than the Trail of Hope or Olympia Hills, please come to the podium at this time.
My name is Reed Dixon. I'm with Infinity Consultants, and I know you've already had your public hearing on the large project master plan communities, but I just wanted to add a little something as it's not a public hearing for that tonight. It's just for your discussion and and consideration. We represent a couple of large projects, as you know, and they comprise together approximately 900 acres, and we're fully in support of this ordinance that you're considering for this text amendment for large project master plan communities. I attended a planning commission meeting a little bit ago about this topic, and they were somewhat concerned about, you know, what's in it for the city when we do these large projects? You know, where do we get commitments for what we receive as a city? And we're very eager to document that in this type of agreement so that the city knows that it's a solid deal that's that's good for all parties involved and no shenanigans. It's all documented and and put down and thoroughly discussed and thoroughly agreed to so that we know what's happening over the years that it will be in place. So that when you are not even on the city council anymore, your subsequent leaders will be happy with what you put together. So that's my plug for tonight's item 10.5. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Council Mayor Teddy Hodges, just a couple of points of consideration and gratitude for Stephen Schultz for noticing the events and the community outreach and support throughout this last week with the floods and with the parade on Sunday. Also, a couple of fun other events coming up. On September 11th, there's Out of the Darkness Suicide Walk. It's here closer to us now in West Jordan at the Veterans Memorial Park. If you go out to outofdarkness.com or AFSP, supporting AFSP.org is information for that. So they raise a lot of money and awareness for suicide and suicide detention. Also, tomorrow night at Brookers, this guy is going to be eating a bunch of ice cream. So if you want to come watch out, 6 o'clock. That's a shameless plug there. So if you haven't tried them, they're very delicious. So that's it. Thanks. All right, we Jared, can you hear us now?
I can hear you.
It's can we hear you?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
So we are still unable to hear Councilman Henderson. Can't hear him talking. It's just us. Okay, we will continue to try to resolve that particular issue.
Is there, is there a way that we can actually try and have him call landline or you call him landline so we can at least establish that connection for him to be able to make comments?
While we are working on that, we will, while the public comment is still open, so we have not closed it, we'll move on to the next item that there are several people here to speak regarding, which is we'll just start going based on the list that I have here. We will start with Josh Cummings. Josh, if you'd like to come to podium.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for taking the time to look at this agenda item tonight, and thank you for all that you do. I know that you get a lot of different things across your desk all the time and very demanding position that you serve in, and I'm just so grateful. Thank you very much. And the purpose of my particular comment is, is first to share my support for the Trail of Hope that that the group that I'm involved with is, has proposed to the city, and to make you aware of some extra information that we received recently. One of the concerns that we had early on when we considered this project and proposing it to the city was the messaging on the signs. We wanted them to be safe, positive, and not pose any additional risk to the community. Suicide is certainly a very sensitive topic that we want to be very compassionate towards. And so we took the plan that's before you tonight, and we submitted it to the AFSP, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. We also submitted it to the UTA Department of Mental Health, and they both looked over it carefully, and they got back to me today, which is a nice coincidence. They, with, with a letter of support that is before each one of you, indicating that the signs are safe, positive, and do not pose additional risk. They don't glorify or glamorize suicide. In fact, there's a framework that we are following from suicide message, Suicide Prevention, Suicide Prevention Messaging.org, and Taryn Hyatt, the area director of the AFSP here, indicated that we had faithfully and correctly followed those four factors when considering the messaging. So I just wanted to offer that extra bit of information. I, it's been a concern of ours for a long time, and I would imagine that caring and thoughtful city council people would also have that same concern in mind. So hopefully that alleviates some of that, and thank you very much.
Next, we have one from Cindy and Ryan Smith.
I'm the talker, so he's going to just let me come up by myself. My name is Cindy Smith, and my husband is Ryan. He's the bald-headed hippie back there. My son Alec Robinson committed suicide December 10th of last year. He was a student of Harriman High School and graduated in 2014. My son was friendly to everyone. He was able to connect with those around him and had the amazing ability to make everyone, he came in contact with Phil Love and accepted. His suicide was an absolute shock to me and my family. When I approached about the Hope Trail being put in by, over by Harriman High School, I had questions about the maintenance, and he would take care of it more than anything. Because after reading the trail signs that are being presented, I wanted to believe that if my son was one of those kiddos walking that trail, that it would have helped him to know that he could reach out. And to know he was loved and he was capable of conquering the world. Thinking about the individuals that might be walking that trail, I believe they are the ones that are going to need to be uplifted. They are the individuals that are oftentimes walking alone, even possibly going to an empty house. They are the individuals that need to see positive affirmations every day. They are the individuals that need to know they can call and connect with someone, and they are the individuals that need help. This trail will give them that. After reading each of the trail signs that are being promoted for this trail, I believe it will help more than what I believe it will help more than one individual. But if it helps just one, it is worth it. That one could and might have been my son. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. We will move on to Rachel Kinnickini.
Hi, thank you. I'd first like to thank the council for the consideration in this issue and topic because I feel it's an important topic. My name is Rachel Kinnickini, and I'm a senior at Harriman High School this year, and I'm a part of the high school's Hope Squad, which is the Suicide Prevention and Awareness Program. And I have many reasons for supporting this Trail of Hope. I believe that it can be a source of unity for not only the school, but the community as a whole when creating it and to create this source of goodness. And I think it's a trail of inspiration that can really bring joy to lots of different kinds of people. And I also appreciate that there's different resources listed on the boards on the trail. This only because in my own personal experience over the past week of the first couple of weeks of school, I personally have talked to several students who felt hopeless or asked for resources because they've felt this loss of connection. So I feel like this trail could really help them. Thank you for your time.
Rachel. Mayor, we're going to call Councilman Henderson, but you're going to hear it dialing, so. Okay. Everyone's staring now. Let's see if you guys know. While we're waiting for that, if Paul Jones wants to come podium and just wait for just a moment, he'll be the next speaker. If you want to just hang out for just one second. Okay, so go ahead, Paul.
Stand up. We'll stare at you instead of.
We'll stare at you. Did you want to? They're asking if you can see if Jared can speak, see if we can hear him.
Jared's a lot better to stare at than I am, for sure.
Jared, can you hear, can we hear you? Because we can't.
Can you hear me now? Hello, hello?
You didn't have to type in every comment.
Jared, can we, can we try again?
How about now? Anyone?
One more time, Jared.
Hello? Anyone?
You should just start playing music or something, and they'll eventually figure it out. All right, Jared. Oh. All right, Paul. Your turn.
Okay, thank you, and thanks to Mayor and to the council.
Go ahead, Paul.
Everyone for being willing to hear this and consider this. I'm Paul Jones. I'm president of the Harriman Pioneer Stake. I have the great privilege of working with close to 2,000 children and youth and have had, I've been through my life in many, many discussions with youth who are hopeless and discouraged and trying to figure out how to move forward in life. And so anything we can do to help increase positivity and provide hope and encouragement, provide opportunities to serve and to support each other, it's a win because they're combat, we're combating a lot of negativity that they're facing. And so my hope and my encouragement and urging is to consider this and let us move forward with something that will be positive for the youth. So thank you.
I'm waiting to see if I need to ask Jared to speak again. All right, Jared, can you, can we hear you?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Anyone? Anyone?
Just keep talking, Jared, and then when you're on there, we'll go.
I don't have a whole lot.
Sound of music coming over.
At least Wendy can hear me.
One more time.
Hello?
Let me try it this way. Councilman Henderson?
Yes. Think we're doomed. Anyone? Anyone?
Can you hear me?
I think that was it. So when the time comes, if he needs to speak, we will put him on speakerphone next to the microphone. I think we're going to have to have you mute. Can you mute your, your meeting?
He'll have to raise his hand for them to see him or something on, online.
Even when he speaks, he's not, we're going to get feedback. He's going to have to turn his volume down when he wants to speak.
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
I actually could hear him that time. So we will Jared, are there any comments that you need to make up to this point that we have missed from you?
All right.
I can't speak to Mr. Councilman Henderson because I'd like to look at his behavior at school. I thought this is where I would catch him, so. I'm Todd Porberg. I'm a principal of Harriman High School, and I want to talk about the Trail of Hope as well. I would say the three stool pillars, legs of this Harriman stool are certainly academics, athletics, fine arts, performing arts. But the seat of that stool is certainly the service that is rendered by students. We've come a long ways at Harriman High School, and a lot of service has been provided. In the near future, you're going to see a mascot bowl where we are helping young children earn money for Christmas. We have put a lot of time into curriculum that is specific to helping kids understand a healthy lifestyle that to take care of their social and emotional health that is taught to every sophomore at Harriman High School. And there are a lot of things, we talk about suicide prevention as, as Ms. Kinnickini said, but we also now, we want to turn that into a hope and a trail of hope. It's hard to tell kids, high school kids, that they're responsible to stop suicide because it's seems impossible. It is impossible. We've turned our attention to hope. This year, the student government and the students have have a theme, and the theme is simple. The theme is simply live. And that theme is going like wildfire. We need a trail of hope. We need a remembrance. Harriman High School is committed to upkeep, service, trash, even financial. If we can maintain a trail such as this, we're very committed. I've got a student body of 2,100 kids that are willing to get behind a project like this. I also encourage the council to support that Trail of Hope, and I'm excited to get involved. We'll be there on September 11th, celebrating that national Day of Service. So I encourage you to support us. Thank you.
In regards to that, that is all of the comment forums I've received. Are there any other individuals that would like to, that are present? In regards to that, that is all of the comment forums I've received. Are there any other individuals that would like to, that are present that would like to speak in regards to the, to the Trail of Hope and Day of Service? Do we have any, go ahead.
All right. So we're, we're having some technical difficulties. So the people on mic can hear us but they can't see the video. We need to reset the room. I'm being.
Okay, so we're going to pause for just a moment and we're going to take a brief, a brief adjournment just to allow that to reset.
A technical recess.
Technical recess.